My name is Mike Fitzsimmons. I'm an ICU nurse at Albany Med for the last 27 years. I'm on the executive committee, on negotiating committee at Albany Med right now. This is a very important meeting for us, the nurses, to have a community meeting like this. And it's very important for our community to hear what's going on. Sincerely, our fight is your fight. Albany Med's the largest employer in Albany County. What goes on there affects this whole area. And Albany Med, as we know, provides the important health care that our community needs. The number one trauma center in this area. If you're having a heart attack, if your child is sick, if you're having a stroke, any of these type things, Albany Med is the place more than likely you're going to end up. And we want to be able to, the nurses at Albany Med want to be able to deliver the best care we can to provide for our community. But we continue at Albany Med to stand for a fair contract because we just don't want to continue the status quo. That's the kind of contract that's being offered to us by the administrators there. We want a hospital that doesn't have the longest wait times in its ER. We want a hospital where half of our nurses in the ER, half of our nurses in the ED, in the OR, aren't travel nurses. We don't want our nurses to be dependent on overtime or second jobs to be able to pay their bills. And we want our new nurses to be able to pay back their student loans. Be able to go out and pay their rent and live comfortably. Twenty percent, we have a 20% turnover rate of nurses at Albany Med every year. It's awful. We don't want our new nurses looking for a new job because too often that's what they talk about when they're at work because they're having a hard time. We need a contract that recruits and retains our nurses and it gives us the resources and staffing so we can do the job, to take care of our sickest patients that live here in this community. So I want to thank all the people for coming here, especially the Albany Black Chamber of Commerce for hosting us. It's so nice that you walk into this facility. We're so happy to be here. And we'll start with a number of speakers. Marion Emright, she's a NISNA board of directors member, and she's also a nurse at Nathan Latour. Marion, can you start us off? Thanks very much.
So my name is Marion Emright, like Mike said, and I am a Nathan Latour nurse for 35 years, may all be starting my 36th year. I'm also on the board of NISNA, and we are here because of Albany Med's fight. It affects everyone, not just Albany Med. Nathan Latour Hospital, for anyone who doesn't know, is a small rural hospital in Glover'sville, New York, about an hour away. And Albany Med is our trauma center that we send patients to that we can't care for. We don't have the resources to care for them at our hospital. So what happens at Albany Med affects everyone, just not Albany Med. And that's why we're here to support Albany Med. And we are also in contract negotiations and guess what's our biggest holding point? Staffing! So we are supporting Albany Med as a local capital district region and also as NISNA, 42,000 members across the state, because what happens to one nurse happens to all of us.
Our community hospitals are so important for our area. We've got to keep them as strong as possible. We're going to have a number of nurses speak now. Our next speaker is Sean Lipinski. He's a pediatric nurse at Albany Med. Thanks.
Hi. My name's Sean Lipinski, and I'm a nurse in our Children's Hospital Flopool. I came to Albany Med as a new grad. I traveled for a while, and I came back after a few years when my family started growing. I've been here for the last year, and in that time, I've seen a very different hospital than the one that I left. Like a lot of the other nurses speaking today, coming to Albany Med was my dream. All I wanted while I was in school was to have the Children's Hospital logo on my ID badge. I love what I do, and I love that I get to do it in a community that I'm a part of. Where I am happiest working is at the bedside in the hospital caring for kids. But life here is unsustainable, and if it continues in this manner, I'll have to leave again, just like so many nurses before me. They decided that though the experience is invaluable, the physical, mental, and financial toll of working here takes on you is not worth it. As a Flopool nurse, I see many different areas of our Children's Hospital. I work in our pediatric med surg units, the pediatric emergency department, and I help in the neonatal ICU. I have a different perspective than a lot of other nurses, but one of the most difficult experiences has been as the parent of a patient at Albany Med. Last week, my 18-month-old son was on a ventilator in the pediatric ICU due to respiratory illness. He's doing much better now he's home. Thank you for asking. Even though Dr. McKenna says we don't have a staffing problem, over those few days, I got text messages every single day about staffing needs throughout the Children's Hospital. There were multiple shifts in the PICU where at least one assignment had three patients, which is double Albany Med's reported ratio, 1.5 patients per nurse that they gave to the Department of Health. When you're a parent and you have a child in the ICU, you want to believe that there's a nurse able to effectively care for your child. When the nurse is expected to provide care for three children whose injury or illness requires ICU admission, the care that nurse is able to provide for those children will suffer, no matter how hard that nurse is working. And they are working extremely hard to care for our kids. Although I know my son was not on a three-patient assignment, I know someone else's baby was. As a parent, it is a horrible feeling to think that your child is not getting the absolute best care possible. Your child is in the hospital, and let me tell you, that is the worst day of your life. You're scared out of your mind, and all you want to know is your child is in the right hands and has the right amount of eyes and ears attending to them. I got those text messages, so I know how strained the hospital was that week. But our nurses do everything possible to absorb those effects so parents don't see. Nurses will do the most possible to ensure that your child is getting the care they deserve. We advocate for your children much more easily than we come and advocate for ourselves. It is so frustrating to be told by upper management that there isn't a staffing crisis when I see it every day. It completely diminishes the experience of nurses, patients, and family members. On a daily basis, we're just trying to stay above water, but we get so burnt out, we have to leave for our own mental and physical health. If I wanted to, I could make twice as much money as a travel nurse again. In hospitals where management shows their nurses that they matter and are appreciated, all of us could, but we stay because we care about this community, we care about this hospital, and we care deeply about our patients. Albany Med doesn't. That's why they spent millions of dollars on travel nurses instead of working to recruit and retain nurses who want to stay here and be a part of this community. Having been at other NISNA-represented hospitals as a travel nurse, I know the effect that a good contract has on patient and nurse well-being. These hospitals utilize travelers to fill temporary needs, not as alternative to the recruitment and retention of experienced permanent staff. We're here demanding a fair contract that ensures safe staffing and a plan to recruit and retain nurses. And we won't stop until we get what our nurses in this community deserves. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Real powerful. Our next speaker is Cheryl Ryan. She's a long-term nurse working at the South Clinical Campus.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Ryan. I'm a nurse at South Clinical at outpatient surgery centers part of Albany Med. I started at Albany Med 20 years ago, and I was an inpatient nurse. I moved to outpatient in about 2015, and that's when I, in 2022 is when I moved to South Clinical. My experiences for several years were really good in the hospital. I had great preceptors, great management, was surrounded just by great colleagues. The nurses were reasonably happy. And then things started to shift in 2015 when there was a concerted effort by hospital administration to start cutting costs and decreasing a number of ancillary staff. As nurses, we were trying to do much more with much less. As a result, it became difficult to retain nurses because they were stretched too thin and they were getting burnt out. Nurses were slowly excluded from any process changes, our voices were ignored, and it became clear that patient care and our expertise in it was not a priority for the hospital. We feel the effects at all levels. Nurses can no longer get the care they want to give. They're exhausted, and they're constantly frustrated. Patients are screaming they aren't getting the care they need. Right now, there probably aren't even enough nurses to help a patient eat. That's shameful and inhumane. Families come to this hospital expecting their family to be cared for, and this is not what they deserve. While all this is happening, we watched Dennis McKenna, our CEO, go on TV and say there isn't a problem, that it doesn't exist, that the nurses are lying. Instead of addressing the problem, responding to our concerns, and increasing staffing levels, hospital management tries to hide it. They'll close beds or force nurses to take on heavier patient loads. At South Clinical Campus, we used to be a very well-run, enjoyable, fun place to work. It had, offers great access to outpatient, offers great access to outpatient care at a smaller location. But in one fell swoop, it disintegrated. In late November, management came in and said we weren't making enough money, and they had to start downsizing. This began in January, the beginning of this year. They also stated a possible closure by March. Management gave a limited number of alternative positions for nurses, but the process they used did not follow our current contract guidelines. Several remaining South Clinical Campus nurses resigned their positions due to the worry that their jobs were next on the chopping block. As a product of the hospital putting profits before patients, we now have terrible staffing and are expected to care for the same swell of patients. We are operating with the same number of patients with fewer nurses, and this is so true of many units across the hospital. This entire closure process at South Clinical has completely ignored nurses' concerns and has excluded us unlawfully in every part of the process. But it's just one more example of the way the hospital's refusal to fully staff its hospital creates unnecessary burdens on frontline nurses, contributes to an unbearable workload, and takes an unacceptable toll on our patients. But we're here to say, we won't let them continue to hide and ignore the problems. And they can't ignore the voices of the nurses. We're here to say enough is enough. They need to be held accountable. We need our staff, they need to staff our hospital safely, and they need to respect our nurses' voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. You know, when you hear these stories, to me, it just makes me angry, you know? And that's why we're here, that's why we're fighting for this contract. Our CEO, just like Cheryl said, says everything's okay. You know, just think about that, you know? When you have wait times in the ED, 24 hours, 48 hours, and at the same time, you have closed beds where we can take care of our community, and that's what we want. We want staffing, and we want, that can accomplish that, and that's why we continue to stand up. The biggest reason we got a union, we voted for a union seven or eight years ago, is to have a voice. And pure and simple, and to be able to have a mechanism to stand up and to speak up. And that's what we're going to continue to do. Our next speaker is Jen Beho. Jen's the president of our Albany Med Nurses Association, and she works up in MICU, and she's also on the negotiating committee. Jen.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jen Beho, and I'm the president of the local bargaining unit at Albany Med and a member of the bargaining committee. I'm a nurse in a medical ICU, and I've been with Albany Med for almost like 19 years. From the very beginning, we have used our union voice to call attention to the staffing crisis at Albany Med. We filed numerous complaints with the Department of Health. We made staffing a core issue in contract negotiations and have taken every opportunity to show how this crisis affects the larger community. We publicly advocated for appropriate staffing through informational pickets, spoke with elected leaders and labor allies to raise awareness, and so our community knew the negative impact of the staffing crisis and what it does, you know, to our patients. When hospital management received a staffing deficiency report from the Department of Health last fall, we, as frontline staff who had called attention on these issues, were supposed to see the report and be a part of the planning process. Dr. McKenna said publicly that hospital administration had shared a report with us and that the plan for correcting the deficiencies was a collaborative process. This was completely untrue. We never saw the report. And in a completely top-down way, they showed us their plan of correction for each deficiency cited, and they basically told us what was going to go into the plan. We had no say. The clinical staffing committee members made up of frontline workers representing the hospital's dedicated workforce were excluded from the process. Dr. McKenna's method of dealing with these issues is to hide, to deceive, to sweep under the rug. They spend over $80 million on travel nurses instead of trying to keep nurses from this community here. They move patients out of the ED to make it seem like patients are being seen quicker. They move babies into other departments because they cannot staff the NICU. Just, by the way, just early this morning, we got notification that our ED has moved to tier four status, and basically it means that we're holding and admitting patients in hallways, spaces that are not conducive to patient care. The staffing crisis at Albany Med is an issue that affects people as far away as Vermont. When you're a mother coming from a rural area and your community hospital has shut down its maternity ward, and you're having complications, your worst nightmare is traveling hours only to show up at Albany Med and have to wait longer. This is what we see in the hospital. This is what we encounter, and this is what we nurses are fighting to fix. But many nurses feel it's not safe to speak up because over and over again, hospital has retaliated against nurses who refuse to stay silent and put their heads down. Dedicated, hardworking, compassionate, committed nurses who are retaliated against for speaking out for what matters most, and that is patient care. We've been met with write-ups, we're put on corrective plans, and we were targeted. We are continuously prevented to exercise our federal right as a union, all because we refuse to back down from fighting for what is right. We all know that patients don't come to Albany Med for the administrators. They come to the hospital for the people in this room. They come to the hospital for the people in this room, and these are the nurses right here in this room. Nurses who are undervalued, underpaid, undermined, but are all too willing to shed their time, their lives, their sweat, their blood, their tears for the sake of the patients that we Patients come to the hospital for the quality of care that nurses give. And staffing crisis, this is a regional public health issue, and we will not be silenced. Hospital executives will continue to threaten us, but we cannot be silenced because for us, nurses, patient care is much too important. Thank you all for listening to our news.
Thank you so much, Jen. Just want to acknowledge some people who've been supporting us and were able to make tonight's meeting. Common Council President Cory Ellis. City of Albany Chiefs City Auditor Darcy Pierce. Albany County Legislature Sam Fein. And Working Family Party also. And I noticed a number of labor activists, labor members in the area, from the area who are here, and thank you very much for coming. The support is essential for us, 100% essential for us. You know, and then what Jen said is just incredible to hear the way she put it. When patients come into our ER or when there are some issues at Albany Med, what we were told in negotiations once was very troublingly. One of our administrators said, if we're having a problem, us, you know, the nurses who are on the negotiating committee, if you're having a problem, give us a call. We'll maybe, we'll maybe, we'll try to do everything we can to help you out. They didn't promise like they would, but that's what they told us, to kind of quiet us, to kind of like, you know, they'll help us out. To me, it was such a disgusting statement because to our community, it's a slap in the face. If you're not somebody who knows somebody over there, you're not going to become what's known as a VIP patient where you do get the private room, or you don't spend 24 hours in the ER. You get taken care of right away. That type of care is, the type of care we want to see is that everybody is a VIP, everybody gets taken care of as best as they can, and that's why we continue to stand up here and fight for a good contract. We have a number of other speakers. I'll get moving here and quit talking. Gabriella Romero, she's our new New York State Assembly member from this area here. She's been supporting us all along. Thanks, Gabriella, and let's speak up.
Hi, everyone. I stand before you as a proud member of this community. You're a Assembly Member for Albany Guilden, New Scotland, and a very strong supporter of our nurses, really from day one, who have been fighting tirelessly for a fair contract while bringing attention to this ongoing staffing crisis, this health crisis at Albany Medical Center for over a year. We all know, everyone in this room knows, that the heart of this hospital and the backbone of patient care are the nurses here in our community. Despite the fact that Albany Med has accumulated over 480 violations, are we at 500? Maybe we're at more than that, 600 violations from the Department of Health, an obvious and clear sign of the staffing crisis, Albany Med continues to deny the truth and refuses to fix the problem. Instead of addressing the issue head-on, the hospital is more focused on spending about $80 million on travel nurses, many of whom are paid twice as much as our dedicated staff nurses, many of whom are here with us tonight. If Albany Medical Center truly cared about this community, they would be investing in our nurses, they would be investing in retaining the nurses who already live here, who are part of our family, who are part of our community, who already care deeply about this community and who are committed to delivering the best actual care for our neighbors and for our families. And for over a year, our frontline nurses have raised their voices for patient care, have been retaliated against, and heard from a lot of people tonight about the intensity of that experience. But instead of being heard, they've been silenced. And this lack of transparency and respect for nurses is unacceptable to me and should be unacceptable for everyone that listens to it. And I'm here to say that, I'm not afraid to say it, I stand with our nurses. I stand with our nurses today. I stand with our nurses for the last, however long I've been elected, so like three weeks. I'm going to stand with our nurses tomorrow, and I'm going to stand with our nurses until the end of time. And I stand with them today in their fight for a contract, and because I'm your state representative, what that means is that I'm your voice for the state. I'm your voice in advocating with the Department of Health for all these 480-plus, 500 violations. I'm working right now on a letter with some other state representatives to the Department of Health to advocate for these safe staffing violations and these other big violations to kind of address these exact issues. We saw some AFL-CIO representatives as well who might be signing on to that letter, and I hope to kind of push the needle a little bit more to see exactly where that goes. And that's my role, whether it's being public, standing here with all these cameras, or if it's Greg calling me saying like, stand on the picket line with me, or if it's making a video for you, like I'm here for you, representing you, pushing the line with the Department of Health, or being on the phone, just a call away, just being supportive. But I'm here for you today, tomorrow, yesterday, and until the end of time. Thanks, Gabriella.
Thanks, Gabriella. Thanks so much. Our next speaker is Council of Churches Rashida Tyler.
Thank you so much. I just want to say I stand with nurses. My grandmother was a nurse, and one of the first things I wanted to do when I was a child was to be a nurse. It didn't work out for me because you do need patience, and you also need a lot of skill, and that is why each and every person who has chosen this profession is of true value to our communities, to each hospital that you work in. And I wanted to say that I was down at the Capitol today, and I was just thinking about the building that we were in, and everything that was happening in the building, and the legislators were working on legislation, the governor was somewhere in the building, everybody was supported by the foundation of the building. If that building did not have a good foundation, none of the other work could occur. And that is what the nurses are in each hospital, in the Capitol region across America. But for people who are at the top to not understand and recognize that you are, your skill and your talent are what is holding up that institution is critical. It is not right, and the New York State Council of Churches has stood with nursing and nurses since 1893. We recognize the importance of your talent and your work. And so I just want to say that we stand with you, we stand with your union. Let us know how faith leaders can help because nursing and faith go hand in hand. You know, oftentimes when our loved ones are, when we're out of our reach, we're calling nurses to see what's happening because you're the lifeline for so many people in this community. And we, as the community of Albany, the community of New York State, cannot tolerate any of our nurses being lost or leaving the field because they're feeling discouraged by something so simple as to give a contract with decent, fair wages for the people who are caring for our loved ones. Thank you.
Thanks, Rashida. Our next speaker is Assembly Member Phil Stack. I just want to say, Phil has been with us from the very beginning, standing with the nurses here at Albany Med, but I know he's also done the same thing with most labor fights in the area, but also including the Ellis nurses, and I'm sure with the Nathan Latour nurses. So Phil, thanks for your help.
Well, first off, thank you very much for having me here today to say a few words. Your fight is a fight for everyone in the community, for all working people. Everyone needs to be treated well in their employment. What inspired me the most in politics was an individual who lived about an hour south of here, and that was the one-time President of the United States, I think our greatest president, Franklin Roosevelt. And Franklin Roosevelt said...
by something so simple as to give a contract with decent, fair wages for the people who are caring for our loved ones. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Assembly Member Phil Stack. I just want to say Phil has been with us from the very beginning, standing with the nurses here at Albany Med, but I know he's also done the same thing with most labor fights in the area, but also including the Ellis nurses and I'm sure with the Nathan Latour nurses. So Phil, thanks for your help. Come on up.
Well, first off, thank you very much for having me here today to say a few words. Your fight is a fight for everyone in the community, for all working people, everyone needs to be treated well in their employment. What inspired me the most in politics was an individual who lived about an hour south of here and that was the one-time President of the United States, I think our greatest President Franklin Roosevelt. And Franklin Roosevelt said, if I were a worker, I would join a union. Now Roosevelt, as we all know, was to the man or born, but he had a sense that it was his job as President to make life better for all Americans. We have lost that in this country, without question. And this fight here at this hospital is a microcosm of that. We have leadership that is a devotee of philosopher, novelist called Anne Rand. And what Anne Rand said was, the people at the top are the ones who matter, not the ones at the bottom. And not say that nurses are at the bottom, these are highly skilled people, but my point is that we don't have leadership in this country with the right priorities and that's true at Albany Med. So we passed safe staffing. I was on the Health Committee when it first came up, when NISNA was lobbying for that legislation. We passed it, it was signed into law by the governor and then lo and behold, the hospital leaderships whined to the governor about it and the governor did not implement it. Now I started talking about Franklin Roosevelt. That's what the Democratic Party is supposed to be. That's why I'm here as an elected member of the Democratic Party from Colony, Niskiuna, Gildan, and a little part is connected. So I, I, we will, as with my colleague Gabriella Romero, we will be standing with you because we have a very clear understanding, like Franklin Roosevelt, of what the Democratic Party should stand for. And when we stand for people, working people, it makes life better for all of us. Thank you.
It's important for us to have elected officials speak out, very important for us. Albany Med is, I mean, it's 70% funded by the government. You know, this is our hospital, this is your hospital. It's funded by Medicare, Medicaid, government reimbursements. And so when we talk about this being your fight, our fight, that's, that's what we're talking about. Our next speaker has been one of our best supporters since day one, Mark M. Nation. He's the Director of the Capitol District Area Labor Federation. Mark?
So Mike and I have known each other since I was, since we were late in our early twenties and we go way back. You know, I've got notes because the older you get, the more important notes are because your memory ain't as good as it used to be. But I'm not going to start my notes right now, I'm going to start this. I have, well, my best friends, my wife, my kids, my grandkids, but my other best friend is, I've been best friends with since we were 14 years old, same as Tom Dolan. And Tommy's wife, who's been friends with me for almost 50 years, suffered from lung cancer. And a little while ago, several months ago now, but you know, not a million years ago, but like probably in the fall, he raced her to the hospital, to Albany Med, early in the morning on Thursday, on 6:30 in the morning. And the emergency department admitted her right away and she got a room at 5 o'clock on Friday. Not on Thursday, on Friday. That's wrong. It's just R-O-N-G wrong. That's how wrong it is. The Capitol District Area Labor Federation has been involved in this fight for the 26 or so years before. We won the union eight years ago, the fight for the first contract. I remember going with Paul Tonko and others to a contract meeting and we sort of raided it, just went in and sat down and they said, what are you guys doing here? And Paul said, you know, the nurses need a good contract. But I want to say something, thank you nurses for your fight, for everything you do, but for this inspiring fight. It's tough to keep fighting and fighting and fighting and see that you don't feel like you're getting any place. You're inspiring others with this fight. I've talked to Starbucks workers who look at this fight and say, I want to be like them. Thank you for the work you did on Martin Luther King Day. We did a, our fifth annual Capitol District Area Labor Federation Martin Luther King Day of service at the Regional Food Bank. And the nurses in the middle, all of the stuff that they do and the hard work they're doing and the double shifts and all of that stuff, showed up, worked for several hours and inspired people that were there at that shift. This is important because as we saw on Spectrum News the other day, the food bank shelves and the food pantry shelves are bare. The food pantry I work with over in Troy Oakwood Community Center, they're doing double last year and last year they were doing double the year before and they run out of food every Wednesday and every Saturday and have to send people away. And this is in the richest country in the history of the world. There's a war on working people. That's what it is, for a long time. There's a war on the poor. There's a war on the elderly folks who worked all of their lives and now can't afford to do things that they need to do, like medicine, rent, food. As you know, the nurses more than anyone else, healthcare is a human right. Franklin Roosevelt, brother Franklin Roosevelt, healthcare. But there's other human rights, housing. You read that stuff about the Comptrolers Report on homelessness? We're seeing elderly homeless, we're seeing families homeless, we're doing overflow shelters everywhere, code blue everywhere. Food is a human right. Wages are a human right, livable, thrivable wages. Time with your family is a human right, rather than working three jobs or 16 hours and go home and work another 12. Working conditions where you're treated with dignity is a human right. And unions, my money, unions are the only consistent force that says, we will stand and we will fight. And every worker should be in a union and every workplace should be unionized. We need solidarity, an injury to one, an injury to all. We need leadership that says, I will do whatever it takes to win this. We need to not give up. And I'm convinced we're going to win this fight and many, many more. We don't have to live like this, enough is enough. I want to say one other thing, thank you to the elected officials that are here tonight. Thank you to those that are here tonight that are running for office and want to be elected officials. To the elected officials that are not here tonight and to the ones that signed letters and sent them to the press, I got one question, which side are you on?
Our next speaker will be someone from the NISNA Board of Directors, Margaret Franks. And Kathy Dawson?
I'm Kathy Dawson. I'm a nurse from Ellis Hospital, I'm also on the Board of Directors, recently retired, so yay for me. Got to tell you, the 42,000 members of NISNA are behind you, we feel your pain, we will fight for you, we will stand up for you. That the moral injury that nurses suffer from lack of safe patient staffing, from lack of supplies, from mismanagement, from managers who are out to get you, is reprehensible. It needs to stop and we are behind you 100% of the way. We want to commend all of the nurses that have stepped forward to be in this role, to fight for the contract. We know that Albany Med is putting profits over patients, we know that. We can see just from the geography of everything, the real estate that they've bought around the hospital, the garages they built, that who can park in them, you can't afford it. I could go on. I worked at Albany Med for about 11 years, so I know how badly they have treated nurses in the past. I can only imagine how badly they're treating you now, but we are in this fight with you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Margaret Franks. I'm the Treasurer for NISNA. I'm also a med-surg nurse. I work in Poughkeepsie, New York at Vassar Brothers Medical Center. I want to echo Mike and thank the Albany Black Chamber of Commerce for having us here tonight because community is important. When you're a nurse, you know that you're part of a community. Every nurse has fellow nurses that have their back, whether you're at work or not. We all stand together and we know that when one nurse is under attack, we're all under attack. We know that when patients in one hospital are under attack, it's happening in other hospitals. This is nothing new. Corporations are coming in and they're taking over and they value profits over human life and that's what we have to deal with every day when we go to work, knowing that no matter what we do for our patients, no matter how we advocate for them, at the end of the day, all they concern themselves with is the bottom line. Down at Vassar, we're about to be taken over by Northwell. They're also trying to go into Connecticut because the system that I'm in right now, which is the third system that has taken us over in the six years I've been there, has hospitals in Connecticut, so they're seeking to get a footprint in there. They're not doing that out of the goodness of their heart. They're not doing that out of a concern that maybe the patients in Poughkeepsie or the patients in Connecticut or the patients in Putnam are not getting the care they need right now. They see a way to make more profit and believe me, they will extract that. And that's what we're fighting back against because this is not how it used to be. I might only be a nurse for 11 years, but I know that healthcare used to mean something. I know that the nursing profession used to be able to go in and leave their jobs with a clear conscience, knowing that they did what they could do to the best of their ability that day and that they had the backing of their leadership. We can't say that anymore. Even what Marion said in her rural hospital at Nathan Latour, they're still fighting, not on as large a scale as Albany Med. I don't think anybody has beaten you guys yet. But they're still fighting for the same respect, for the same levels of safe staffing, for the same levels of safe patient care that goes on in every facility. And it's a shame what healthcare has come to. It doesn't have to be that way. There are more than enough nurses in this country to fill these positions. You're spending $80 million in 2023 on just one staffing agency for travel nurses. That's $80 million that's not tied to your community. That's money that could change the face of your community. It could help small businesses grow. It could make sure that your education system is stronger, not just your healthcare, but it's not happening because they'd rather let money leave the region than build up the area that they're a big part of. And that has to stop and we have to stop it because they're not going to. We have to be that voice of conscience, we have to be that voice of reason, we have to be the voice that stands up and says, no more, we're not going to do this because our patients matter, their lives matter, because one day, we're going to be that patient. I precepted at my hospital and it breaks my heart to see what these new young nurses are coming in and being faced with, thrown into seven and eight patients assignments with very little training. That's not how you learn. That's not how I learned and I only started bedside in 2014. How has it come to that? Because they believe that they can run over everything, they believe that the law doesn't apply to them. When the staffing bill came in, did they change? No, they did not. We had to hold them accountable. At Vassar, we collected staffing data on floors for three years and we forced the Department of Health to come in and do their job because they weren't, because something was holding them back and we know what that something was. We know where the money is, we know where the power is, but we have people power. I see 1199 here, I stand with them every day, I cannot do my job. And just as community and family is important to nursing, our union families are there with us when we need them. I see other unions here tonight, I see our politicians, they have our back, but we're going to hold them accountable too. Because if you want to earn our vote, we need to know that you have earned it, that you will do what you say you do. So I just ask everyone here to please sign our petition, AlbanyMedicalQualityCare.org, go on social media, post a note of support, tell your friends, tell your family. You need to make calls, you need to let people know that this is not okay, this is not the healthcare that you're going to settle for. You deserve better, we can provide better, we just need the tools to do it. Thank you.
By standing up, that's the only way we're going to change things, the only hope we have, standing together. And Margaret did mention that 1199. And you come from Hudson?
Yeah.
Yes, and we're actually brothers and sisters, owned by the same company, right? There were other union members here too, I fill, there were some USWA guys, but anyways, I just thank you for coming, it's how we stand together. And so, that is, wraps up our speakers. And what we're going to do is open up the floor for questions and answers. And we can start that right now. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
My question is, my name's Christina Williams, I am running for the Albany 26th Board. My question is, how much of our federal, how much of our hospitals are under federal How much? How much? That's what I'd like to know because right now, Trump is slashing things and if most of our money for our hospitals is coming from the federal government, then we're going to have issues. So are we able as New York State to fund our own hospitals ourselves? Just a question, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
I think it depends, hospital to hospital. It's a blanket answer for all hospitals.
So it is a thing, we need to know how much of our money is coming in from the federal government to our hospitals because if that gets cut, we're talking about an actual subsidizing from the state.
Well, it varies hospital to hospital and year to year and Albany Med at times has been, it's been close to 70% of the money they get comes from government programs, Medicare, Medicaid. And on top of that, you could ask our legislature, Albany Med is talking to all hospitals, talk to the state for reimbursements at different times, tax rates, the hospital don't pay any taxes. So there's all different ways, I think, our government subsidizes the hospitals and just what you're bringing up is a big deal. So we're going to have to continue to, you know, you know, talk about the hospital not just as this like, they act like they're this private company, you know, making all their decisions without any input. That's why these are our, these are our community hospitals. The more well-to-do hospitals, like St. Peters or some of your private, more, you know, the private hospitals, they have less Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement. So they, they get more tax dollars through direct payment from HMOs and stuff like that. Any, any other questions? There was some? Yes, back there.
So Mike, I'm still, I'm really shocked that it's been, what, you're closing in on six months now without a CBA for you guys? It's unbelievable that it's happening this long and it should have been done by now. I thought, I'm like really shocked that it's still going on, but I would like to say, you guys had a picket, like in what, August or September it was? I would like to say, you guys had a picket, like in, what, August or September it was?
Yes.
Is there any thought about doing that again?
We're continuing to escalate inside. We will certainly let our allies know as soon as we're ready to be back outside.
All right, thank you.
It's a little cold right now.
Did you stop the seaford?
Yes, sir.
There was a delay right now in contract negotiations. Have there been any movement on the issue of staffing?
There has not been the movement that we need on staffing. But I'm sorry, everyone. My name's Bill Woodson. One of the folks that's at the table with the negotiating committee, helping to negotiate the contract. Their management has made very little kind of surface movement on staffing issue, and staffing, not movement, that's enough for the negotiating committee to say that we're ready to settle the contract.
Yeah, what's on the table is almost the same thing they want for us back in the end of July. They're not, you know, and, I mean, I think I said, you know, we're not, we're not looking for the status quo. We need a hospital where we can continue to recruit and retain our nurses, and this contract just doesn't get it. Yes?
Hi, everyone. My name's Aaron Petkov. I'm a former member of the News Guild in New York and a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, and also, my wife and I delivered a, your blessed child, about four and a half months ago, that we delivered at Albany Medical Center, thanks to the incredible talented care and attention that was, you know, paid to us by the nursing staff at Albany Med. And I just wanted to express my thanks and gratitude to the hard work that you all do, and just let you know that, you know, I would just love to find out more about what folks like us that benefited from your attention and care can do to support you in making sure that you get the strongest and best contract that you all can get. So I'd love to just, I'm just here to support you all, and would love to find out what we can do day to day to help you in your fight. Thank you.
Some of the public access on this is great, and we do have a website. When we ask for people to speak out and contact Albany Med, it helps a lot. Public pressure is a very important tool we have. So if you could just do things like that and spread the word, let, you know, your friends, family, neighbors, let them all know, coworkers.
I'm going to DOH and tell them to release the report. We need to know what the actual issues are.
Yes, hi. My name's Mike Blue. I'm with USW as a retired member of their sorority program. And I've been at quite a few of your rallies and et cetera, I guess. And in fact, I was at the one at Ellis, where I tried to use the bathroom and was forced to be injected, basically. Literally, I had to go next door to the sewers, because they told me that I was not allowed to be in the building. And I said, "It's a public hospital. I'm a member of the public." And they're like, "Too bad. Get out." So anyway, the reason why I rose to ask questions, I wondered if you guys had had any contact with the governor and discussed with her whether she's willing to stand up to assist with regard to the safe patient staffing issues that are continuing at the hospital in spite of the fact that it was a law pass and et cetera. I was just curious.
Yeah, we have. My name's Greg. I work with NISNA, particularly for the Department of Health in New York. And I just want to say, we have been in conversation with the governor's office and also the Attorney General. That's part of, like Bill said, just now, that's part of an escalation strategy that we are putting in, implementing now. And as Gabriella mentioned, we just had a meeting with the New York State CIO, who also said that they were going to put efforts and support into helping these nurses to get a contract at Albany Med and improve in the nursing experience in the Capitol region as a whole. So that's part of the plan that we have, and we are escalating, hopefully, in the next few months, and as long as the contract is open, we'll be on.
I just, we're willing to help. So if you guys get to a point where it would help to have union members support you to the governor's office, we'll make some calls. I mean, we're willing to help in any way we can. So, great. Thank you.
It was a great turnout, and the best thing you can do is spread the word, and we'll stay in touch, all right? Thanks so much.